God bless America.
Okay, you can start.
We're gonna open the first selectmen's meeting. Normally, we stand for the blessed believers, but we've all said that and everybody's already been at the other meeting. So we'll just go right into it.
I'd like to welcome my buddy back.
Oh, thank you. It's so lovely to see you back. Okay, so we didn't discuss anything anyway.
I make a motion to sign the warrants?
Well, we're, she's asking us to wait.
Who?
I want to make sure we're on the on.
She's trying to open the meeting.
You were on it then.
Okay.
Okay, we're good.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Do you want to say hi again, or?
I'm gonna say, we're gonna open the select board meeting. So I want to take a motion to sign the warrants.
I can make a motion to sign the warrants. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, uh, don't have any warrants to sign, Renee? Sorry.
Why don't you check? I'll take one.
Okay. And this is another business.
And while the signatures are going around, I can make a motion to approve the minutes of March 3rd, 2021, select board meeting. Ooh, I can't. I was not there, so.
We need a motion to sign.
I would move that we approve the minutes of March 3rd.
Do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. While we're making motions, I would just like to read something from the Municipal Officers Manual. It was brought up by one of our co-selectmen that is here tonight, that the chairman made. She didn't believe the chairman could make the motion, so I should like to read this. Unless the municipality's charter ordinance or rules of procedure provide otherwise, which they don't, the chairman may make motions, second motions, and may vote at any time, not only at the break of tie vote. Good thing, because I mean, I used a motion right after, after we researched that about five years ago. Every once in a while, I'll compel myself to make a motion. Normally, I like to get the motions from all the other board members.
Can you cite the paragraph a little bit?
It is, um, page 26, under Voting in General. Chapter 3, Executive Functions of Municipal Officers. I made you a copy of that.
I don't believe it.
Okay, so. There's no old business, so new bids, opening. Make a motion that we open the bids?
I moved that we opened the bid for the property.
Second.
For the property.
So I believe, also, we have three. So we will open them and see what we have. There you go. Thank you, Dan. You have to get old enough to watch Johnny Carson to get that joke. All right, the first one is they were given a bid form in the bid package. It was a little more complicated than normal, wasn't just a price. They also had to say what they were gonna do with the property and when they were gonna do the property. When they were gonna do it. So this bid price is 25,000. There's supposedly, uh, I don't see, the prop. Yes, see it is. There's the proper deposit. So other than the normal, um, legal ruling of you have to have 10% of the bid and you have to have the purchase and sale agreement within seven days and furnish, um, the rest of the money within 45 days, the important part is what they were gonna do besides the money. So bidder commits to complete necessary maintenance and repairs of existing structures by 12/31/21. Existing hotel rooms, new cafe, and visitor center become operational by 5/1/2022. Function room, patio, and additional lodging rooms become operational 5/1/2023. Camping cabins built by 5/1/2024. Now, we're just, uh.
Who's the bidder? I didn't hear who's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't say that. See that? The bidder is Maurice Stockford. Sorry, I was on the second page, so.
Stockford?
Stockford. Um, a relative of.
Yeah.
Yeah, half of Stockford. So that's one. This is a bid, well, maybe we'll look at the second page. From Brandon Lyons. His bid is 25,000. He has the proper deposit. And it says here, please see attachment 1, which is three pages. Feel free to contact me via VSO or other, you know, any complications. Commitment. I, Brandon Lyons, will make an obligation to the redevelopment of existing structures currently on the tax-acquired property to the best of my ability, within my budget, if awarded the bid. The five-year plan below does not have any completion dates due to the many unknowns and continually changing markets such as material price availability, unknown pedal issues. So it says material has triple in price, and I have to say that's true. Right, Jason, it's been really bad, like two-by-fours of like triple in price. Unknowns, costly and time-consuming issues discovered through duration of the project, underground tanks. Title issues, I have contacted several tire companies and not one of them would even think about insuring this property. Those title issues. So we give them a quick lane deed and clearing the title is up to the bidder, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Both tanks have expiration date of 5/1/2020 and wants all conditions of the tank. And weather-proof the existing structure. Renovation of motel rooms, this step will be a priority in hopes to begin generating some income to offset some expenses. Renovation of the old main store area, wants to make a marine store, support the local fishermen and the traffic from the new marina that's scheduled to be built nearby. It's quite lengthy, so renovation of the old log mat. So renovation of the game.
Continue.
I assume, yes, and we can ask him, but I believe he's going to do the, um, the motel rooms, renovate that, the main store is gonna be a marine store, then there's going to be an old, when we belong to that. Then renovate the remaining spaces in the main building for pharmacy, local entrepreneur, potentially rental pharmaceutical company, similar to family pharmacy located in Metropolis. Renovation of the car wash space and renovation of the old garage area. So I'll read his summary. These eight steps above are the start of the plan to renovate the existing structure on the property. There are a lot of unknowns and potential existing issues associated with this property. Pedal issues, environmental issues, material cost fluctuations, material availability, et cetera. So estimating an exact budget and schedule is not realistic at this point. However, I would like to take on this project in a very methodical, step-by-step approach within my financial boundaries. With construction material costs alone, triple what they are a year ago, material budget alone grows exponentially. I'm not a million-dollar company, so I need to be smart and efficient when scheduling, budgeting, and financing this project. I also would like to note that I grew up in Lubac and graduated from Lubac High School. I am proud of the hard work our locals put into our town to support each other through good times and bad. I will be working with local contractors and businesses during the construction process. Also, as each phase of the project is completed, there will be local jobs produced. Ultimately putting local people to work. That will be the key for the long-term success of this property, of our town. Thank you for this opportunity. Okay. Any more? We have a bid of 35,000 and the proper amount. To the selectmen. Hello, my name is Derek Lyons. I am 36 years old, married, two children, and live in Lubac. I am submitting an offer of $35,000 for the property located at 106 Main Street. The property needs a lot of work done soon, and I'm ready to start now. I want to renovate the existing building and turn it into a hotel and seafood restaurant. The old tanks need to be taken out first, and I've spoken to Gap Tech, and they can remove them in late April. The roof installation and some doors and windows also need to be placed as soon as possible. I've received a quote from a reputable contractor, and he can begin this work in July or August. Once those jobs are done, I would install new vinyl siding on the whole building and then start working on the inside. Once inside, I will be renovating the existing eight-room hotel first. It too needs a lot of work, but I plan to have those rooms open by June 1st, 2022. Construction will be ongoing as possible, and I plan to have an 18-room hotel and restaurant fully open by the following spring. So that's, um, the spring. Is Derek here?
23, yeah.
Okay, that's all. Okay, that's what I thought. The last phase of my plan will be to transition the former garage into either more hotel rooms or long-term apartments, depending on the needs at the time. It won't be easy or quick, but this is a great opportunity to add to our growing town. Lubac needs more lodging jobs now. I think my proposal will offer both starting immediately. And we'll be, I will be in attendance Wednesday and can answer any questions. So those are our three bids. Uh, we were, we have been notified by the attorney that we do not have to make a decision this evening as it is quite, um, we kind of have to think about it. We aren't really able to go into effective session. So what our thinking needs to be, can be now, is to comply with me. I mean, it's not like there are so many bids and they're not so different that we have to weigh not only the price, have to weigh the timeframe and what's gonna happen, what's best interest of the town.
I'd kind of like to sit on it for, think till the next meeting because, uh,
I mean, in all honesty, the, um, the bid from, uh, from Brandon Lyons was, um, lengthy, and I really wasn't able to read it all to you. So you probably would want to review that. It doesn't exactly have a timeframe, but it is, um, a sizable commitment to the community as well as Derek's and.
Maury. Maury Stockford.
And what would? I can't remember what it was.
I was wondering.
Stockford.
Hotel and, uh, welcome center.
Is there another summary in that?
So, um, yeah. What about that? Okay, this is.
Yeah, was the existing hotel, new cafe, visitor center operational by 5/1/2022?
What did it say? Well, there was time, there was a timeframe in two of them, and then there was, um, a sizable amount of reasoning why they couldn't give a timeframe in one of the bids. So just to reiterate, uh, by 2013-21, the maintenance and repairs of existing structures will be done. Then a hotel and cafe and visitor center will become operational by the following summer, May of next year. And then a functional room, patio, and additional lodging by 23. So this is lodging. And I believe Derek was, it's mostly lodging, correct?
Lodging.
And a restaurant?
Yep.
Lodging and restaurant, and then, yeah. So you want to wait. We should wait, I suppose. So we need a motion to table.
I would move that we table until we get further information. And, uh, I would like not to have a time limit on that table.
You table to the next meeting.
I'd like to do it the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, two weeks is plenty of time to make a decision.
Are we going to ask for plans, like draft plans, sketches, that kind of thing?
No.
No?
I think that's why we were having the time, that's why we were having the, um, timeframe. As long as the building is ready.
I don't think you can obligate that expense without.
No.
And I accept it if there. To be honest, materials are changing every single day. A sheet of drywall right now is $24. Two-by-four eight is almost $10. And every single day, it all changes.
Do we have, uh, people quit because we wanted to put them together?
When's the budget? August? I can't find your page.
Well, um, they do actually have a picture of what they're doing. That's why you need to review.
Renee, can we make a?
Yep.
So I believe Rachel made a motion. It hasn't been seconded.
Table.
It hasn't been seconded.
Are we gonna table it for a week?
We could table it for two weeks.
A second, yeah. Who's second?
Uh, all in favor? So we should have plenty of time. Uh, I'm sure all three of the bidders are be willing to, where's the? Be willing to answer questions, and I think sooner is the better. Really, we have to have another meeting in a week because they're, we're holding on to them. This sizable amount, a sizable amount of money for people to be sitting in Lubac.
Well, you want to do it next week? I mean, I'm good giving it a week. I'll be honest with you.
One minute.
I'm good with that.
You want us to have a special meeting next week, or?
Why don't you just do it next, next week?
Yeah.
Give us a week.
If you think it's okay.
What's next? Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Five o'clock still, not, because it's not April 15th. We're still at five o'clock till April 15th, right? Till the snow, the snowman is melted.
Special flight movement is coming anytime.
Well, I think it should be when anybody could come. It's an important enough subject that the public should be able to be here. So why don't we just schedule it for next Wednesday, five o'clock, therefore, we don't have to. We have the press here already. Thank you, John, for being here.
So you just want to revise your motion?
To table it till next Wednesday. Yes.
And you second the revision? And you vote?
All in favor? Okay. Well, I think that it's wonderful that we have two people interested in the property. Very excited for whatever goes forward, all of them. All of it would be an asset to the community because that's been a long-time coming. It was unfortunate that the person who purchased it decided it would just let it deteriorate. And this is why we came to this conclusion with legal advice, that we were able to ask for stipulations on the purchase because we couldn't have that happen again.
It's gonna be a win-win for everybody.
Yes. So, uh, we're off to, well, the next one is review the charter and manual. I've already read what I wanted to go over, but starting next, not next Wednesday, but the following Wednesday, please bring your Municipal Officers Manual with you because we're gonna be going over it. Sewer commitment in first quarter. All right. So from November 1st to January 31st, a commitment of $37,247.19. Uh, I make a motion that we sign the sewer commitment.
Second.
All in favor? Add authorized signers to bank account. Town Lubac Selectmen authorized to follow people to be signers on all Town Lubac accounts. Carol Edison, Dan Wagner, Suzette Francis, and Renee Gray. I believe, uh, three of us were already on there, and Renee is the deputy treasurer, which is why we need to put her on because if for some reason, I mean, Suzette is always here, but if for some reason she can't be, we do need someone that can fill in. And as it stands now, all the town checks are double-signed. There's always two, two signatures on them, one of the selectmen and one of the treasurers, or deputy treasurer. So I suppose, uh.
The motion is over, honey, Renee?
Yeah, well, yes, but I don't think either one of us, being on the signs, can't make the motion.
I'll make a motion. We add Renee to the signing list for the banker.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Just chime in, Wanda.
So we have listed here discussion on the wastewater treatment plant upgrade for the rural development grant. So now that we've passed the $990,000 money we're getting from the CDBG, I sat in with a meeting with the Rural Development Committee and Renee and, um, Mandy Oliver, who's been doing all the grants for it. And Rural Development came back with the proposal of giving us 3.61, 3.61, right? 3.1.6.
They're gonna give us 1,600,000.
Right, but I was gonna, it's all, the package is 3.6 million, and I don't know, there's like 100,000 or something in there. So they want, but in order to get the 1.6 million they're gonna give us as a grant, they, we have to take a loan from them of 2 million. Now, of course, I was, it's a lot of money for a small town, and so I asked Mandy, how does this relate to other municipalities and what their financing looks like? And she said that it was very good, that out of a $5 billion project, having to finance 2 million isn't a lot. And of course, I just said, well, let me go back and do some numbers. So we did some, you know, how, how, we had to sign to go forward with this.
Application.
Application, but it, we're not committed, although they think, it's, and the interest rate is 1.25? Really low interest rate.
29-year term.
Yes, so it's 29 years of payment to fix the sewer. So, um, obviously, I took the 2 million and divided by the amount of users, divided by quarters, came up with a figure of, I believe it was $44 more per quarter for the 29 years, with just taking the whole debt on the users themselves, which is 136 users, I believe. So then we did it, and we thought, well, let's do the numbers with the whole town taking 25,000 and paying that back like the town's been used to. The taxpayers on a whole have been for years and years contributing $25,000 to the debt of repairs of the building, the initial building of the sewer. So how would that affect the actual sewer, sewer users? So I believe it came out to me, $33 if we did that per-quarter increase. So that's about as far of the numbers I've, we've run by. This does not have to be decided till they actually come back and offer it to us. If it's a lock in that rate of 1.25, we had to go forward with the application. And we won't know for a while whether we've been approved. And this will be on the August 20. So we will obviously, I assume that the select board will come up with a figure in an article that will request a certain amount from the general taxpayers, and then the rest to be put on the actual sewer users.
I will remind everybody, the, um, the special town meeting that you just voted on, the 990,000 from CDBG, those funds will be available July 1st and will go towards the first phase of the M-HO tank repair and replacement.
That has to be done right away.
If the town does not vote to go any further with this, at least those will be fit out of the money we've already got awarded.
Except it's past its life, if it's correct.
So if I understand it correctly, basically, you, half of it would be financed, that, and one-third of it, a quarter of it is from a grant, and then the other?
Well, it's 990,000, then there's 400,000 from the BDP, then there's 1.6 million from the rural development. So it's 3 million, that would be roughly, roughly 3 million in grants and 2 million in financing.
That's very generous, yeah.
And, you know, it's a tough, you know, it's tough to swallow when you're, when there's 436 users, but hopefully, the town's growing and there'll be more users. We just have a new user, um, a commercial one, which will be spending sewer, you know, increase the budget of sewer. We're also reevaluating, we've, the town voted to put aside monies to have the whole town reevaluated so that some of the new construction will be placed in, with the new rates, because I believe everybody's rated at about 1991 or 96, Jim said. So it hasn't been reevaluated for over 20 years. So as much as I'd hate to, um. You know, even entertain borrowing of 2 million, it's only gonna get more expensive. As Mandy said, the worse, the longer we wait, it's gotta be fixed, it's going to have to be fixed, the more expensive it's going to be.
Our plant operator is having to rely on eBay to get replacement parts because they don't manufacture them anymore, so.
We were already overdue when they came to this.
Yes, so I think she's done a great job, and I thank her for all her hard work, as much as I would sort of like.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, my feeling is you can't pump it all on the users either.
Uh, and I agree, but also, I don't, I think that, well, in, we do have numbers of what other town users have to pay per quarter. Do I have a hand, uh, go ahead. I'm sorry, what's your first name?
Ed.
Ed.
You're talking about financing this over a 29-year period.
Yes.
How, what is the expected service length of the new plant? Is it 25 years like the previous plant?
Hopefully, it's 30 or 35 years. And part of the stipulation of the rural, of the rural development, um, finance package is that we put away a minimum of $10,000 a year for, to offset costs of repairs. Something I should have mentioned.
The evaluation is on our town website, and it defines everything that's gonna be replaced. If anybody wants to look at it, it's right on the front page.
I know Esport just upgraded their climate, I think, last year, and it was already at $5 million.
And theirs is a sister to ours.
And theirs is the one that's paying 198 per quarter, is that what I read? Did you have Esport start down?
Yes, uh, they're paying 89 minimum per quarter. They're, they're actually, I don't know how much the city's paying for it, though.
Oh, okay. Well, that's something, I guess when we put on the warrant for the general taxpayers to contribute, you just have to take in mind that you can make a motion to reduce the amount, but you can't raise it. So we, we'll see how that goes. And what's fair.
Well, I think it would also be important to say how much of the total percentage the consumers are paying because if you're talking between 5 and 6 million, that could be, what, one-third to one-half? I mean, that's very, it's a small, a small part of what the overall cost is. Right? So I think it's important for people to know that the consumers aren't bearing the entire burden so that the people in town know that the sewer increase would not be the fair increase for it all. The, the town board and staff have sought to get all these additional monies to lessen the burden for the users. That's a really big deal.
The entire taxpayer paid for the original, right?
Uh, they, no, they didn't pay at all.
But, but to be fair, I mean, we had, Pecos was running, the medicine home was going.
Car wash.
They were some commercial businesses that were kicked into it.
The flow was.
But let's hope that we're having a renaissance of new buildings, and as we just opened bids tonight, it looks like we're gonna have.
We need more year-round residents, too.
Yes, I mean, when they close up their house and don't have any clothes, all winter long, it doesn't, they're just getting the minimum. So that will be on our August, our August special town meeting, I mean, regular annual town meeting. We don't have to actually. RFP for solar field lease. Uh, we were just given a few days ago, it's in your packet. Um, let's see, who gave it? Who wrote that, uh?
Sally Daggett.
Sally Daggett, oh, well, good. She put together an RFP for the site lease for development of solar, um, solar systems. And how much of it has to go in the paper?
I mean, what?
How much of it does, how much of the ad has to go in the paper? Does it, it's like a bid package, you put a little small amount in, and then you click on the rest of this for information?
I don't know that.
You don't know that? Well, it's, when do, when do we need to go forward with this? Says here, the site lease will be subject to final approval of the Town of Lubac Annual Town Meeting, which will be held August 4th, 2021. So I guess the sooner we advertise this, the more bids that we will have. And I do think, I'd like to review this, so.
You can table it, and so you want, you guys can pick it up.
Uh, I, if it's all right with the rest of the selectmen, make a motion that, that you allow me to, you know, you wanna read it too? It doesn't have to be signed, so how about we make a decision next, next Wednesday as well on this, because we've all just gotten it? How about we, we do that Wednesday, so we get it in the paper?
And, and the final decision's gonna be the path.
Yes, but I think right now we wanna read this carefully to see what the lease entails and, I haven't read it. I can read it by itself by next week. And that way we can go forward with getting it in the paper. Efficiency Main rebate for heat pumps at municipal buildings, so this I just learned about today, Renee.
Do you wanna?
But that's a good deal.
Very good deal.
Do you wanna vote on that table?
Oh, oh, yeah. Well, we would, so, yes, we need a motion to table the solar field lease position until next Wednesday?
Yes, I would vote that we table it until next Wednesday, yeah.
Second or the second?
Yeah, the second.
Okay, raise one.
Thank you.
So, did you have some minutes there? Are you voting?
Just all in favor.
Sorry, that was my fault. Okay, Main rebate for heat pumps.
We were notified, the, that Efficiency Main is offering municipal buildings in Maine, this really generous rebate, uh, for heat pumps, which would provide assistance to the boiler, it's, and also cool air in the summer, the air conditioner.
And the rebates are?
The rebates for three units, this building would take three units and we would get a rebate of seventy-eight hundred dollars total. Uh, so there are two quotes, there was an additional, a late one that came in today by AED Mechanical, and in your packet, there's one, I think.
So what are the prices of the quote?
I might not have included the one already.
You handed it to me separately. He said it just came in, it was, no, it's right here, I have it.
From Border Electric?
AED Mechanical, now, that's the second one that came in, but they're talking from Border Electric. So there's two?
Yeah. Border Electric's proposal is for twelve thousand, four twenty-five.
Now, does that include the rebate or is that?
That does not include the rebate.
So you're looking at.
And you take seventy-eight hundred off from that.
You're looking right around forty-six hundred.
But the other quote is for eleven thousand six fifty. And that takes seventy-eight hundred off from that.
Are they same brand?
No. Um, the AED Mechanical out of Callis is Fujitsu. And the brand Border Electric proposed, Dakin.
Yeah.
Bobby saw a different quote, cause he wasn't familiar with that brand, he was familiar with Fujitsu.
Well, I, unfortunately, well, this is probably the only meeting we've tabled hardly anything in about six years, but I can't make a decision on this.
I'll just say, um, Bobby has gone through his budget, the municipal building budget and the fire department reserve budget, and he is in support of this. And, and his budget has the funds to pay for this issue. And we have to know by March thirty-first, this has to be in.
I'd like that, I, I spoke to Bobby for about an hour the other day about it, and just, just what she's saying, he has the money in his account to do this.
So he's gonna, so the fire, it's already in this year's budget?
Fire's also.
So he's okay with it?
And he, no, he's all for it.
Yeah, he wants to do it.
So do we have any history or discussion on the two different?
Well, the electricity will be still paid by, I mean, it's electric, correct?
They don't, they don't use the whole law.
Right. And so they'll, so it involves, it includes heat and air conditioning, right?
That's right, yeah.
And there'll be three spaces, one for this room, one for the main office, and one for the fire bay?
And if we ever.
And they're, and Bobby is willing to pay and, and why, and do all pay the work for the rebates and all that, or you'll help with that?
That's me, me and, and the supplier.
Okay, where's the other company out of?
It's called AED Mechanical and they're out of Callis. And you have to be a qualified partner on the Efficiency Main site, and I did, that's, they are, they are qualified.
And so this is less money, this is eleven thousand six hundred and fifty. Now, how, how long does it take for you to get the rebate back?
I believe all we have to pay is what's, oh, it's not like a, it, it comes right off the top. We won't have to pay and then be reimbursed, we're, we're, it's immediate.
Is there a difference in the warranty?
I'm not sure.
Cause I, I know Dakin's a real.
Warranty is follows, twelve, twelve year on compressor, seven year on electrical controls, five years on refrigeration bonus, and one year on full labor, that's the AED one. The other one? Uh, doesn't say, but that would be something you would wanna check. But, I mean, that's the lower quote, I just, does Bobby need us to vote on quote? I vote on the thing, since we're selecting, I didn't even say the thing, you know the thing?
I, I will make a motion, we, we take a bid for.
Yeah, I, I think so too. Take the eleven six.
I believe Bobby, if they're willing to take it out of that budget, then I don't see any reason why we need to table it then.
And again, I spoke to Bobby for that way.
So do you wanna make a motion?
I did.
And, so, for the eleven, for the AED one? Okay, all in favor? See, one, let's table one. Fire museum roof.
This one is just an FYI, the, actually Dakin's probably talked on this too, but um, the, the museum fire roof is leaking. Bobby would like to, um, seek rubber roof options. And he just wanted to let you know that he's in that, um, process, so. There's nothing yet to be decided tonight, he just wanted to let you know that there's issues and that we're looking into options.
Oh, yeah, we drove by and they were, they were, the grant was up there, they were, they were. Who fixing them?
They're sapping the roof.
The roof is a, is a mess, okay? The nails are all rotted right off, they're rusted right off, they had, there's no heads on the nails anymore.
Well, the thing is, he's just said he has money for this compressor. Is he also gonna have enough money for the roof?
He believes so. Cause he's got reserves.
He, he talked about metal roof at the beginning and I, I told him, I said, you know, on, on a roof that flat, you wanna go with rubber roof.
Yeah.
It's the only way to go, do it once and be done with it, and no problems that way.
So do we make a motion to go out the quote or does he go, do we make a motion to give him authority to do that?
Yeah, he'll get, he'll do what he did before and get some quotes.
And then he'll come back, he'll come back and.
Okay. He just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Bobby.
Okay, well, good, thank you very much, Bobby. So in other business, we have an appointment papers to, uh, there being a vacancy on the position of Celebration Committee Select Board, the municipality, in accordance with provisions of laws, may hereby appoint you and CD?
And?
I wouldn't say that again.
And CD, Jane, today they get sworn in.
Oh, yeah, we have.
So we, I had a point that they were trying to.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Yeah.
So on the Celebration Committee? We need a.
I'll make a motion, we, we accept that.
Second?
How are, how are her celebrating skills?
She has an army to help her.
Yes.
There's a family, yeah.
Excellent. So other than committee, I believe that by May, the committee will be back in meetings, saying that we're getting, a lot of people are getting vaccinated, hopefully COVID is getting better and going away, and we're getting current immunity, and we'll start with, at least the essential players will start meeting again, I, I believe in May.
We, we've never stopped.
Well, no, we never, we never stop.
No, I mean, up and there and.
But we're talking about. Other meetings, many updates, we did that. Public comment, if we have a, Wanda?
Okay, I, uh, I have just a little note for yous about an update on our Fourth of July. Of course, we have to ask the board if we're gonna be able to have one. I'll give you one, two, Renee, and just. But I'd just like to say that Anne has signed up, but we also have four new committee members. And, uh, we also have two or three citizens that are stepping up to the plate. Uh, we've met three times and we've already, we've got planned three days of activities and a lot of really fun things. We've got the swine is already reserved, we've got a puppet show, our, you know, the, uh, the boat races, and, and her family's gonna do bingo, but we've got a lot of great things, you know, planned for our holiday.
Are you gonna be meeting up here or Zoom?
Well, this, last night we met here, and I think we will from now on.
Yes, so that's, you just have to meet up here or?
Yeah, and, uh, we've been, we've done two fundraises already, we planned for six. And this group right now, we've worked really hard, you know, for this, and we do have a, a special grand marshal this year.
We do, who is it?
We can't give any people away. But anyway, I hope that, I hope we can, you know, but we'll have to see what.
I wouldn't ma, I wouldn't get it out if you wanted.
But anyway, I hope that we, you know, we'll be able to do it, cause we really have put in a lot of hard work and we've already raised.
You didn't miss a beat last year.
Not one beat, no.
Pretty exciting that we have, we're able to have our Fourth of July and all, with all this great.
And of course, COVID guidelines and all that. And I did have one question I wanted to ask, uh, just wondering, on the bids that you people got tonight from the Donegal store, I mean, I, I didn't understand why you just went take the highest bid, I didn't understand that.
Because when we discussed putting, first of all, when we discussed putting out the bid, we, we, we also, uh, ideas came out, well, maybe we should have, you know, a two hundred thousand dollar minimum bid, because it's very valuable to this property. But we opted to go with the lowest minimum bid that was needed, so that it would encourage people that had money that could put, renovate the property. So the real problem, we, we believe, I think as a whole, agreed upon, is that the property itself needed to be renovated and that was more important than money, than just money. Look what happened last time with money.
It was timeframe, we don't want this to.
Timeframe.
Get a bid and six years, seven years from now, we're all still staring at it.
Yeah.
So we wanted some very specific, which we needed to check with legal to make sure that we could do that.
And a lawyer did.
That didn't just, I didn't figure that one out.
And this way, the town kinda has skin in the game, I mean, to, you know.
Yes, it's, what, what is more beneficial, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars where somebody tears it down and sits on it till it depreciates in twenty years, it's, we're still looking at emptiness. Or, I mean, cause at the very minimum, we weren't gonna look, I don't believe anyone wanted to look at the building the way it is right now. And so that was a major factor. When, um, what were they gonna do with it and when was it going to get done? And it's part of the purchase and sale agreement.
If it sits in a five, nine years, it'll be gone. I mean, it's a high chief, Derek can leave, he's been through it, I've been through it, we'll see.
Yeah, in parts, it's, it's a terrible story.
In the original discussions, though, was talk about putting this in a stipulation where the town actually had teeth and could recover the property if the deal was not honored.
It is, in the, it's, um, in the, in the purchase and sale agreement with whatever the agreement is, whoever wins the bid, um, and whatever they've agreed that they're going to do will be, actually, the language will be put in the purchase and sale agreement and will be considered a default if it's not done. But as far as the technicalities of like, like, oh, like if you're a month later, all of that will have to go to the lawyer and they'll decide. Like any large construction project, there is penalties for not completing things by a certain time, so I think she will.
And it's not just a handshake deal, it's written.
Oh, no, it's, it's a purchase, a total, it's a purchase and sale agreement with an addendum that includes the, um, development of property, yes. That's why they had to put it in writing what they were gonna do. And I imagine we will have some questions for, what are the bidders for a better timeframe? Yes. Uh, we have a question, question from Drew?
I don't think so, somebody just came on, but I muted them.
I mean, and, and, and the thing is with that building too, I mean, a month, two months, six months, you don't know, because once you get into it, you know, you, you could put a four, four month, you know, timeframe on it, and you run into something and it's six months.
Well, I think what we'll do is, we'll review these, we'll, we'll probably go up with some questions for all of them.
All you did.
And then we'll take some notes and then we'll, we'll, we'll let everyone obviously read these and then, uh, we'll come back next Wednesday with answered questions of a more specific time. I think some people were very specific on that time.
Oh, no, they're all very good.
Well, one was, did not have any timeframe, so, uh, just, cause of many, so they would have to come up with a timeframe, cause there will be time, there will be dates. I mean, let's say you're, you, let's say you want to finish by the first summer, but you don't finish till the end of the year or the beginning, I mean, you probably need to have a little leeway in, in that, there should be a drop dead date when you don't, when you have to fix it, so that we're not just sitting here in limbo.
Progress. Well, and as long as, it doesn't just sit there with nothing happening to it, which has happened.
That's, that's what I'm all seeing is progress.
If I could make a suggestion, what's into the plans, none of them included using the tanks for fuel source.
I, I don't, I, I didn't, no one said anything about a gasoline station.
Okay, so my suggestion would be, put a drop dead date on the removal of the tanks and make that a short date. So we gotta get those tanks out of there. You don't have a right to go deep before they rush through and start pumping.
Well, I was told by a contractor that deals with this, that they're fiberglass tanks.
They have to.
And in his opinion.
See, I think that's a weird.
Yeah, in his opinion, I, he, he thinks he's pretty sure that they put some holes in them, inspection holes, and he questioned whether they even had to remove them. And this is a guy that's done it for.
They do, I follow the.
Derek.
They do them all, yeah.
Being fiberglass?
Uh-huh. Geez, it's the double wall jacket, they're, they're, they're put in ninety, I don't think they're fiberglass though.
Did you say, did you say that the people that inspected for you said they had come out?
Um, I contacted Gas Attack, they're a bank where they're like the big.
But they said, they said, what, was their answer?
Oh, the E P said, yes, they need to come up with a new thing, cause they expired last year, and like, you know, you might be able to get some type of suspension for a little bit, but.
And so, and you actually said that you were gonna take that as the first thing you were gonna do?
Talk to him, he's down in April, early May.
So, um.
Working on it. Barbara's back there.
Barbara, sorry.
So I have a question, so it sounds like you're looking for the best qualified bidder. I don't, is there an obligation to go with the lowest qualified bidder when it's really, what's the best qualified for the town, right? So it sounds like you're looking for.
And when they ask the question, how are we gonna decide the answers, that we will decide for the best interest of the town? And the best interest would be, I would say, expedience, um, and what's gonna get back to the town and.
That was my recollection from Ed.
But as far as qualified, I think, um, I assume all of these three bidders are qualified, especially, you know, if you're not personally qualified, then you're gonna hire qualified people to do the work, so I don't know what exactly what you meant by qualified.
Qualified, and then they have the, the financial wherewithal to do the project and the purchase and it can make it happen?
Well, actually, somebody asked me that, I mean, were, were we going to require financials to see whether they could actually follow with, you know, follow through with it, their, like they said they're gonna do, I don't, I don't, I think that's something that we don't need to take into consideration.
But because.
But it wasn't put in the RFP, it's just basically, our, our, basically, I believe the town stance is, they said what they were gonna do, if it's done in a timely manner and it's for the best interest of the town, if for some reason, for, through no fault of their own or through no fault of the towns, they default, that there's a clause in the contract that states that we can in fact, we could, I believe, the, the, the property can continue to put back into the town. So Sally made sure that there would be a clause in there for that and, and vice versa. If for some reason the town, in fact, didn't do what they had promised in the agreement, then the buyer would have the same, it's, it's a.
Default of that, Jeffrey.
Yes.
But I mean, if they, if they, whoever buys it, if they ran into something, the board is reasonable.
Yeah.
Well, absolutely, of course.
If, if, call the working together.
Yes.
You wanna make it happen and.
Sure, they go and they find out something that they had no idea was in there, it's gonna take an extra three months or whatever, I, 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 we're not gonna just.
It's gonna run into a lot of things, but.
I imagine that everything you can think of, you're gonna run into.
I've been doing it for thirty-six years and very, very rarely, in a remodel, do you put a drop dead date on it and need it, especially that side.
No, is next Wednesday open to the public or is it?
Yeah, no, no, it's fine, it's regular, all select board meetings are open to public.
Okay, I did use.
No, we're not, no executive session here, where all of this discussion will be out in open.
Okay.
All we're gonna do is ask some questions and get some more information, so we can make a better decision next Wednesday. And I'm gonna let the rest of the selectmen read the.
Well, I want copies of it.
Yes, you're, we're making copies tonight, because there's three or four pages in some of them.
I've got a question, is there a status A on those bids when they planned on status, they got the building?
Well, um.
I think it was on Derek.
Yeah, Derek has started a proposal for pull the tanks.
Derek, Derek definitely had. Derek's all ready to go get his gas tanks out this summer. The, um, the other date was that they would complete the necessary maintenance repairs to exist to all existing structures by December twenty twenty one. Which is, you know, that, this, um, this December. And that they would be fully operational by next summer, so. I think they're just giving themselves some time, cause sometimes, you know, when you get into October and you're still working. Brandon Lyons' bid was very comprehensive and very well thought out, very heartfelt and did not have time. Something I think we're gonna do is ask him for a little more, um, specifics on, there was many, many ideas were, is that it? Of how the property was gonna be utilized and if we could put some kind of timeframe on some of the, some of the different phases, because there were like eight different phases. And also a little bit, we'd have to research a little bit on the title, because I believe once you get someone that's booked claim deed, that's it, you know, there. They have to clear up the title and stuff, so.
So will all of them have that opportunity to care of, uh, whatever else you, you people are gonna be looking for? Uh, could have any more input on their, uh, their proposals?
I think that for all three bidders, if anyone wants to add to, um, be any more specific than they were tonight, because there's another week, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, I don't see, certainly it's open for another week, I don't see why they couldn't add, I mean, you can't just like come up with a wholly new idea. But you could come up with dates, but I think there are dates in two of them.
Yeah.
I wonder if any part of that building, um, is, you know, it's still, you know, a little bit intact, like any area of it would.
Oh, and I think the, I think the, the framing and the foundation and a lot of the.
Foundation's in there, which is.
Yeah. But like, you probably had to rip the wall, just the studs, the, the things in between the walls and all of that, the framing probably is fine. Is that wood framed, do you think? And the whole new roof needs to be put on, right?
Oh, without a doubt.
There's big holes, you know, Ico, Ico fingers, they're awesome.
Is the area where the garage was, where Johnny did the garage, is that intact, is that?
It's in rough shape, there's a big hole in the roof, you know, it needs to be matched, but as far as the, you know, the structure, the bone and all.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a mess, but.
Yeah, Derek, can I ask you a question, what about, you know, that extension in the back? I haven't really gone back there.
That's it, that's what I'm talking about, that's what they are.
What were you thinking of doing with that?
Um, well, that would be glass, but either more, if.
Is it salvageable?
Oh, yeah, the whole building's salvageable. Like, when I went into it, I thought part of it had to be torn down, I mean, I had people look through it, it's tough to do what I can think of. Down the road, that, that garage could be there's some apartments or even more hotel rooms, um, so maybe some apartments here belong, but.
Yeah, that sounds, uh, a partner.
Just for the information of, of the public, uh, the bids aren't public yet, right, or are they?
They are now.
They are, we just read them.
Okay, so if people want to see the bids, they come to the town office and they can't write per page if they wanna get a copy, or how does that work?
Um, yeah, they're public, they're public, actually, I guess Renee can scan the, yeah, I don't know, we, we never, we never tabled a bid, normally we make up our minds in the same day, but it's too comp. This is just more in depth than a normal price bid. Um, what, you're the, you're the.
They're, they're public.
They're public, correct, so.
I just think it should be clarified, so that some people don't have the information, others don't, you just say it's.
No, as a matter of fact, the selectman hasn't really read, I mean, uh, Brandon Lyons', it's like three or four pages long and I wasn't able to even read all of that, so. To give him justice for what he said and, uh, and if anything Derek might wanna clarify, that would be fine.
I asked Renee to, to identify the lawyers, so she could, you know, table it or executive session or because.
We already did ask her and she said we can't.
Oh, no, no, that's, that's, I asked her last week and she didn't.
Oh, right, oh, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Jason, thank you for that, because she clarified that we couldn't go with the executive session.
Cause I, you know, I didn't know if you didn't get.
Yeah, I thrilled to have three.
Right, and there, yeah.
So this way everyone knows, so it's a, you know, open process, if people wanna find out, it's not these clandestine, it's out there. People, there's no reason why anybody can't find out if they don't want to.
Next one, next one, say and speak.
On call. No, absolutely, the public, any public input on the bid.
I don't think I have a ten minute.
It's a good idea.
I don't start.
So we will make comments tonight to give to the selectmen before you leave, so you can take them home and read them.
Yeah.
And otherwise, um, if you're interested in delving into the bids, then they can come up and request a freedom of access information and you can give it to them. And we will publicize that there will be specific meetings next Wednesday to discuss it and hopefully the people who come have done some research, will have something to ask them, you know, something to say about the different projects that were presented.
Yeah, can I just ask Renee one more thing, like, we kinda have attendance scheduled, I mean, like, we wanna use stocks for, for quite a few little things. Should we give her a, a schedule of things to reserve that area?
Yes, yes, and just bring that for next meeting week, and like, we can go and set it aside for you.
Yeah, thank you.
And just make sure you're not conflicting with Lance.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I'll call him.
Yeah, you wanna call him and see if he's doing a little concert or whatever, but it would only be for a few hours. I'm sure you could work around that.
The Summer Keys coming, does anybody know that?
I believe they are.
Yeah, they're still on schedule.
Good, but, but the, uh, the marathon canceled for.
No, marathon's not happening.
Really canceled, yeah, yeah. The Summer Keys is, uh, is on?
As a matter of fact, if you know of anybody who wants to be race director, that's up for grabs.
Well, I'm a faculty and I've been notified that I'm on the schedule, so Summer Keys is on.
Yes. Oh, okay.
I'll be race director this year.
Definitely on, excellent, excellent, you're the best, I'm back up.
And I've been a faculty for seven years.
What are you teaching?
In your place.
My name's Derek.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yes, excellent, you're thank you, congratulations on your new book that you just.
Yes.
Thank you.
Want me to name it again?
The one that just came out, The Legacy of Liberty Gore.
The Legacy of Liberty Gore. Gore. Well, somebody was working during COVID. And we were all working.
Do you wanna?
Everybody's all sold out.
Motion for our executive session. Oh, executive session. Okay, we're adjourning, I, I, I moved the way to.
It's not, it is not, it's not to do with the, uh.
Motioning to executive. That we end up, we move it to our executive section.
I'll second it.